Yeah, that is a long day. When do you head out for your trip in June?
Fourteenth of June.
So, within a five-minute period of time, we went from not having a quorum to almost a full quorum, so I appreciate everybody's arrival. So with that, we will convene the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 20th, 2024. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as a community, we have much to be proud of and much to be thankful for. And one of the events of this past month has been the Batavia Men's Brotherhood banquet of all the men from all the churches in town. And I had the opportunity to speak at that, and it was a very warm, felt, and highly appreciated opportunity for all the men of all the churches to get together and to share their ideas and their beliefs in God. And at the end, I told them the story about how just recently, we've had two different people into the city hall trying to get some piece of information, and they asked to talk to me, and on two different occasions, both of the people said they moved to Batavia because when they got here, they found God here, in their opinion. So they said they really liked the sentiment of Batavia and how as a community it's set up. So I wanted to use that as the kind of the message of tonight's prayer, from the perspective that we have much in this community to be thankful for and appreciate, and we are ever thankful for all the good people that make up our town. As always, we want to just ask for a special prayer tonight from all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be placed on each one of these men and women, along with all those from our country who are serving with them for safety and security as they go about their vital missions. Also tonight, we want to remember those who are sick or infirmed and cannot get out, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of these folks. As always, we ask for vision and understanding and creativity in the minds of the city council as they go about discussing and voting on the items in tonight's agenda. And we know that in their hearts and minds, each and every one of them is here to do what they feel is in the very best interest of Batavia, and that in itself is a very strong blessing. We ask for all these blessings and understandings. Amen. Who would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Anybody of honor, volunteer? Go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Janzett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Fourteen present and unabsent.
Very good. Thank you all for making the effort to come and serve. Moving then to item number four, which is a reminder that if you're going to address the city council tonight, we ask that you please come up and use the microphone, because this is being recorded and played on BATV, and without using that microphone, you'll be kind of non-heard of speaker. Moving to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda, does anybody in the council have anything they wish to bring up? All right. Moving then to item number six, is presentation of tonight's consent agenda, and we have Alderman Beck prepared to present that. Alderman?
I think Dan can take it.
Dan's here.
Oh, Dan's gonna do it?
Yeah.
Let me switch that on. Dan, you want to do the consent agenda?
Andy, your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for February 2024, the planning permission minutes for January 10th, 2024, March 13th, April 3rd, April 10th, 2024, and 2024 post issuance compliance report. For approvals, the May 10th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,027,066.21, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,464,603.3, city council minutes for May 6th, 2024. Resolution 24-77-R authorizing execution of contract for the 2024 street resurfacing, sidewalk replacement program that's needed for construction. Resolution 24-78-R accepting I.DOT resolution to appropriate $1,640,419 for the state NFT fund. Resolution 24-42 amendments to the official zoning map, multiple properties, this is for 501, 502, L of 9, 427, 502, 503, 514, Roberts Lane, 503 through 625, and 504 through 608, McKinley Street, 1017 through 1111, 922 through 1018, Walnut Street, 119 through 1125, Morton Street. Orderance 24-39, amending the text of the zoning code section 4.216 for electric charging stations. Resolution 24-75-R approving task order number nine with HR Green, Inc., that's for the river and state street retaining wall and stay or rehabilitation. Resolution 24-79-R approving a contract with meeting for 45KV underground circuit upgrade, that's a 1801 sun cast lane. Motion to approve a bid to sell land at the northeast corner of Main Street and Deer Cap Road. Ordinance 24-44, declaring certain property surplus and authorized in sale. Ordinance 24-43, approving amendment to the plan development, I'd translate it with right ordinance 16-82 for five throw flame street that's exploited and funded by applicant. And finally, resolution 24-76-R authorizing execution of the contract with air char heating, that's for 2024 stolen sand sewer line project. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Motion second for the approval of the items as presented on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Janzett.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, and unabsent.
Motion's approved. Move to item seven. As matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda, do we have anybody this evening? It's not. Okay, item number nine is, I think, a very special moment. We are going to recognize the gift from the estate of Jane M. Peterson, which funded the sculpture on the Colbarium at the West Side Cemetery.
Item eight first.
Pardon?
Item eight first. We had one more before that, after the matters from public presentation.
Okay, yeah. Do we have anything from item eight, which update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation?
Jerry Ruth?
Thanks for having me again. This is the update for the Phase Two A project at the wastewater treatment facility, update as of today, but for May of 2024. The bike path and road closures and detours are still active, just another reminder for everybody to be careful while entering or leaving the area, and be sure to pay attention to all directional signs.
Talk about that when you're done.
The big news on the project is the fact that we're able to demolish the excess flow clarifier, the large structure. If I zoom out here, that you see in the background of the site, that demolition is almost complete, but it was quite an undertaking. Two of the proposed structures, one for UV disinfection of process flow and the headworks, are moving forward with their concrete foundations and walls and tanks. Water main and storm sewer work is ongoing on Water Street and Pamarko. The effluent line was tied into for the proposed UV building and the new effluent flow meter, and water main and gas service work was ongoing within the treatment facility property itself. Some project photos to review, the proposed UV building first, ongoing with the structure as you see here, the concrete channel, influent and effluent boxes and foundations around that. Here's the channel itself being poured, and here's an aerial shot of that as of May 3rd. You see the building foundations around the channel in the middle. So this building has come along nicely, this is one of the ones that has a early milestone they anticipate being done by the end of the year with this building. Terms of the headworks, the footings, and the slab for one of the large tanks in this building are progressing nicely. They've got the concrete slab placed, and the walls around the lower section of this tank, as you see in the background on the right side of the hair. Here's an aerial again from May 3rd, showing the progress, leaving the north wall exposed so they can have access for their equipment to get in and place all the concrete that they need. Offsite work, storm sewer on Water Street is ongoing, it's like one of the last things to do on the underground portion of the offsite work for this project. And there's water main installation on Pamarko Drive, and the water main up on Water Street should be complete with all services as well, so that should be up and running. Intersections here, shown on the left for Water Street and Main Street, and on the right for Water and Union, so we still don't have the road paved out, but it's being reconstructed. End of May, early June, we should be by the end of June, free and clear through that street. And here are the north and south ends of Pamarko Drive, that'll be trailing, it's not as high traffic area, we're prioritizing Water Street. And as I mentioned, the road and bike closures are still active. Inside the fence, natural gas installation, roughly 900 feet of natural gas line was run, temporary force mains and piping demolition inside the fence, sort of hard to tell from this picture, but, sorry. The building in the upper part of the picture is the old headworks that we're replacing near the center of the plant. Here's the old on the left and the new on the right flow meter on the 24-inch effluent line, that was installed and is now operational. And here's some pictures of that excess flow clarifier being removed. Contractor broke into the east side of the tank to get their equipment inside, and then piece by piece, took the structure down. Terms of an update on cost, roughly 24% completion as of today, based on the days remaining in the contract. Overall, just over $14 million spent on engineering costs and construction costs. We do have one change order processed. We do have one change order processed, amount of $64,500, roughly 0.1% of the total contract value with no time associated with it. In terms of schedule, generally everything is on track. The only thing that was pushed, which wasn't, uh, required contract milestone, was the bike path was delayed by about a month, uh, but the plan is still to have that, uh, operational and accessible to the public by, uh, the end of July. And that is the update for May. I understand there might be a question or two.
Yes. Any questions?
The access or blocking access for especially bicyclists has been almost laughable down there. People just don't even respond to the signs or equipment in the road or, you know, a dump truck backing up. I happened to be down there the last two, I think it was Saturdays, and literally witnessed people riding with burly's with kids in them, going through the construction site around a backhoe that was active, moving pieces of concrete. I, I just, I, I don't know what we can do differently. Is there a way, when you have that type of construction on that street, that you can physically block off the street? I mean, I know that that's an extra minute or two that you're gonna have to get drivers in and out or whatever has to happen to move those barricades, but it just seemed to me almost insanity to see somebody try to get through there in that situation. And other people, I mean, I have a friend that lives over there and she went, it's a guy that just basically threw his bike upon shoulder like he was in an Iron Man and trot through the gravel to get past so he could get through there. You know, it's a block each way to get out of the way to go out to 31 and come back. I, I just don't understand why people have to do that when they see it's an active construction site. So if there's anything you can try or think of to reposition barricades or whatever when it's actively being worked on, to try to stop people from coming through there, we need to try to do that, because I'm just afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. And I, I already heard stories of people that have wiped out and got hurt down there but haven't come back at the city about anything.
I would, I would just comment that if given the choice between an active construction zone and biking on 31, I might choose the construction zone too.
I'm talking about the sidewalk that goes down the side of 31, where I see the majority of people, or I see a lot of kids on bikes go through there. That's the thing that's strange to me. It's not kids on bikes going through this construction site, it's adults.
Alan?
Yes.
Wasn't one of the concerns that was brought up was the fact that the road was blocked for emergency vehicles? We had a neighbor that was here complaining about that.
Right, that they were worried about that. And I guess my, my concern is I just don't want to see somebody get hurt, and whatever we have to do to try to stop pedestrians and bicyclists from going in there, we can do. We can move a barricade or they can move a barricade when they're out there actively working and if a fire truck shows up and has to get in there. I mean, I'm not-
I don't think it's going to stop somebody from going through there, honestly. I, I mean, it's just like anything, like we put up speed signs. People are gonna, are not going to obey it. It's-
Mm-hmm. I, I just wanna try-
There's a certain point where we just go-
A little bit different, whatever we can try to try to do this in this last month or two as it gets really nice out, because I'm just appalled at the, some of the things I've seen over there. Even the Friday night I was down at Water Street, the second Friday, there's people cutting through there, walking down the middle of the street in the gravel.
The administrator would like to offer some comments.
We've, we've put signage out there, the path is closed, the road is closed. People are entering these areas at their own risk, at their own peril. We have seen bicyclists who, where the, um, stairs have been taken out, scaling the broken pieces of concrete to get their bike up from Flint Street to Pamarko Drive. Um, I think it's a situation, as Alderman Barron says, where despite the fact that the road is closed and there's ongoing construction, individuals are making their own decision about their own safety, that they're gonna enter a construction zone with perhaps children in tow. The permanent, the closure of that road would mean that residents and people who are trying to get to businesses and to Water Street Studios would not be able to, uh, get there by vehicle and would have to park outside of that area.
Yeah, I, I guess my biggest concern was, i- it was amazing to me to see somebody out there where there's a backhoe going-
Yep.
Running, dumping chunks of concrete into a bomber truck sitting in the middle of the street. I turned around in my car and went around the block because I wasn't gonna wait for them to move so that I could get through there. I wasn't even gonna attempt that.
Yeah, it's been shocking. It's been shocking, what people will do.
So, you know, I, I, I think more so, I wanna make sure that we do everything we can to keep pedestrians and bicyclists out of there when they're actively out in the street working. And I know that's gonna be for the next couple of weeks as they do the sidewalks and the gutters and, you know, all of that, so I don't know what you can do different, if there's anything you can do different that you think's gonna stop people, try it. That's all I'm asking for.
Appreciate it. I'll, I'll bring it up again on Wednesday.
Okay.
And just to, to echo some of the statements earlier, um, public access to the homes and emergency access has to be maintained while maintaining a closed construction site with a moving site. So anything that you do in the right way like this, obviously you guys have been, have seen this for over the years, there's inherent-
And I've had good contact with the few residents that I know that live on that street, that they've been very appreciative of being able to walk out in front of their house, talk to whoever's there in control that day and say, okay, I need an hour to get in and out or whatever, and they work with them. I mean, the crew's been really good to work with people down there.
Well, it's good to hear. And it's, um, as much as we try to broadcast here and on, and on the city website and with the signage that's out there, oftentimes, unfortunately, what happens is people get in their zone and they have headphones on, they're not paying attention to flashing lights or noise or the signs, and they have their route that they're going on, and that's the route they're gonna go. So we do our best to, uh, blockade as much as possible, put the signs physically on the sidewalk, but as we've noted, um, it's, it's just hard to stop everything. But we'll, we'll bring it up again and we will certainly talk about if there's anything we can do specifically with the tasks we're talking about now. So we're talking about curb replacements, sidewalk replacements, driveway aprons, uh, and then eventually finally the actual roadway reconstruction. So there is gonna be a lot of activity up there, and I know that we're, we're getting close to, well, we're in the nice season of the year, and so people are out a lot more. It's a lot more obvious now than it was in January, so, um, the contractor is well aware of it and they are pushing to get done as soon as possible. They're not required to. The task that they're doing right now on this road isn't really the critical path, but they are doing it because we've told them, you shall. Thank you.
I just want to add to this conversation. I've had the opportunity in the last few weeks to appear before several senior citizen groups in Batavia, and on two occasions I've had members of those groups tell me, well, I used to live down there by that sewer plant 30 years, 40 years ago, and it smelled and it looked bad and it was not a nice neighbor. And now I drive by there and I'm totally impressed by how it looks, uh, I don't smell anything, and it was a wise investment of Batavia to build that, to do that the way they've done it, so. And then the, kind of to top it off, I've had the city of Naperville, several of the aldermen ask if, they haven't come yet, but they wanna come over and take a tour of this Batavia facility because they've heard so many nice things said about what we can, can and cannot do down there. So one of these days I'm gonna be calling Jerry saying, I'm bringing the Naperville folks over to see this, because they seem to have a very strong interest in it. So we're doing something right, and I appreciate the comments that we've had here tonight because they're all well-taken and well-directed, but I would just wanted to add here, in comparison to what it used to be in the old days and how it smelled and looked and did whatever, we've come miles away in progress in the last few years under Jerry's leadership and the engineering that's worked has been done, and so we should be very pleased, I think, when this is all over with, and I, wouldn't surprise me if we don't have to build something more onto that pretty quick, so we'll, we'll see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Um, on the schedule update, it said you were hoping in July to reopen a bike path. Is that Water Street we're talking about?
Partially, yes.
So what is this bike path?
Ah, so the way that the bike path used to meander around the wastewater treatment plant, it used to be common path of travel with Pamarko Drive-
Yeah.
-where Pamarko and Union intersect. So north from there, it would be common path of travel for like 400 feet or so, and then would branch off into its own path that would hug the property limits of the treatment plant. The property limits expanded, the bike path was realigned so that now instead of common path of travel, the bike path will cross Pamarko Drive, have its own dedicated route from there all the way up onto Water Street where it will join the currently shared path of travel from there north.
So we're still looking at, um, still getting into downtown Batavia, not a direct route?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I just wanna make a statement, kind of just bouncing off of what Alan said, so starting this weekend, the quarry opens and you will see a lot of children out. Um, and typically, because one of my children is one of those kids, they go from the quarry, they used to take the bike path down to come downtown to go to Walgreens and McDonald's and then go back to the quarry. Um, so you're gonna have a lot of kids trying to find their way downtown, so I'd just like to let your project managers know that. Um, and for all of us to be pushing out that word to our children that they need to be going up to 31, um, but that's the reality that Batavia's facing.
It is, and the, the detour is going up the hill that a lot of the kids are probably not gonna wanna do, frankly. The adults don't wanna do it, so, um, they, they are very well aware of the date for the quarry. Um, we've been coordinating with the Park District to make sure that they have access throughout construction, and they've been hammering on that date, so we know that it's coming up quick.
Yeah, it's about six days away.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments in the council? Well, thanks, Jerry, for coming down and, uh, bringing us up to date.
Not a problem.
Okay, now my mistake, we'll go, we'll go to eight, which is the, or nine, excuse me, the gift of the estate of Jane M. Peterson, which funded the sculpture on the columbarium at the West Side Cemetery. Who's got any information that, Laura, are you gonna do this?
This actually goes back to when I first started working with the city. Um, in 2016, the city of Batavia received a $25,000 donation, um, from Jane's estate, and it, uh, was to be, uh, used for improvements to the West Side Cemetery, and that's all the information that we had. Um, and so at that time, Bill Kellum was looking at the future for our West Side Cemetery and determined that, um, cremation was becoming much more popular than interment, and so he made a plan to, uh, purchase a columbarium, and, uh, that columbarium has been installed. It has been extremely popular. Uh, many, many people have asked for placement in that columbarium. And then, as you know, last year, we conducted a contest, um, for artists to submit sculptures, um, to put on top of that columbarium. And we decided that something that would probably be very meaningful to Jane and to her family was to, um, utilize the funds that she provided us for that beautiful piece of artwork that now tops the columbarium. It's, uh, beautiful flames, um, that make the columbarium look like, um, a candle, really. It's, it's just beautiful how it all turned out. Um, but in addition to, uh, saying thank you to Jane Peterson and, uh, to her family, we would also like to recognize the efforts of Bill Kellum, who has done a magnificent job of planning for the future of our, uh, cemeteries and, uh, you know, supervises the crew that make them, uh, so lovely for, uh, loved ones to come and remember their relatives who have passed. So I wanna recognize Bill Kellum for his efforts in all of this as well.
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to offer that this is a nice addition to that cemetery down there. Uh, I happen to have friendships with several people who are in the cemetery business, and they're all telling me that the way we'd go in the future is cremation, that there's fewer and fewer people having put themselves in a coffin and get buried in the cemetery, that they may get cremated and then have themselves buried in the cemetery, or they may take their ashes someplace else. But, uh, I know we've already kind of done some preliminary planning out there that we may need another cremation standard, subject stand in there in the near term, and so I think we're ready to figure it out where we'll put it if it, the day comes that that needs to be done.
I think we can add, um, some complimentary pieces-
Right.
-around the center that we have created.
Cause I, that's an interesting question. A lot of people have now seen that, and it's causing a lot of people to kind of rethink how they wanna be, you know, put into the cemetery or not put in, or how they're going to do it. And, uh, for those of you who don't know, we have a very unique situation down at the West Side Cemetery, up on the northeast corner, there's this big open area right by the tree line that goes down to the quarry that there's not much at all in it. And, uh, back a few years ago, we had some people come in and try to buy a cemetery lot there, and our group, our staff went out and tried to dig into it, and we got all these bones immediately came out of the ground. And what we found out was there had been a cholera epidemic in Batavia in 1877, and literally dozens of people had been buried there with no record, no idea of where they were being put or placed or whatever. So we then ended up, uh, having a plaque made that sits right in the middle of that big open area, and it says what's going on there, why it is the way it is, and that, uh, we will never be putting any more people here because there's already a whole bunch of people there that we really don't know who they all are. But I thought that was a nice way to deal with something that got handed to us almost 100 years ago, but, uh, there's, cemeteries are a very unique aspect, and any town you talk to has got their own stories about them, and, uh, I like to think the Batavias has been, both of ours have been well-maintained and managed and planned, and that we've got the right places and the right people and the right information going at the right place. So I'm thinking though, that with all the new people that are moving into town, there's gonna be a whole bunch of folks that are gonna wanna look for someplace to be laid to rest, and, uh, we're probably gonna have to come up with a good answer. So, uh, thank you for that, and we wanna go on record as publicly expressing our appreciation and thanks to the estate of Jane M. Peterson for funding the sculpture at the columbarium on the West Side Cemetery. So I'll make that public statement and just officially thank her for, on behalf of the city council.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. All right, uh, we move to item 10, which is a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month. And who's got that? Alderman Beck?
Your honor, a proclamation. Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the Motorcycle Safety Foundation have named May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and whereas state and motor, states and motorcycle associations across the country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote the importance of motorist awareness and safety, sharing the road with motorcycles, and remind riders to make themselves more visible to others. And whereas the city of Batavia wishes to promote the safety campaign of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration in their effort to ensure the safety and well-being of all, and whereas all highway users, users should unite in the safe sharing of roadway throughout the city of Batavia, King County, and Illinois, and all, with all others on the roadways. Now therefore I, Jeffrey D. Shilke, mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and urge all motor vehicle owners to join in this effort to keep our highways safe. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shilke, mayor of Batavia. Your honor, I would move we approve the proclamation as read.
You made a motion for it to be open?
Second.
Yes.
Second. Court call the roll?
Beck? Aye. Peeper?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no known, none absent.
Motion's approved. So we are honored tonight, you, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know your names.
Kathy and Ken Crowell.
Husband and wife.
And they've come representing the Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month.
Yes.
And so we're honored to give you this, and we got you a, your own copy, and I want, wanna present this to you, and-
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do to keep motorcycle riding safe and enjoyable for people-
Thank you.
And on behalf of the city, we appreciate your good efforts. It appears to me at least that there's more and more bicycles and motorcycles on the So we've got to make everybody aware of the need to ride safely and keep themselves on the street and not in somebody's backyard and running around. So you want to make any comments?
Just, we're thankful that you recognized us, and we work very hard all year to bring awareness. We go into the schools and teach, the driver's ed classes about motorcycle awareness and safety. So a lot of our, a lot of our group abate is education. And so we do a really good job with trying to bring awareness to everybody. So we appreciate you recognizing us tonight and it means a lot to us.
Thank you for coming down.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along then. Next is item 11, Presentation of Batavia Wellness Initiative. And I see we have representatives here from that, so the microphone is yours.
Hi, my name is Amberlyn Vaughn, and this is Sarah Greenhagen, and we are here for the Well Batavia Initiative if we wanted to promote some awareness, excuse me, on our festival that's coming up on June 8th from 8:00 to 11:30 right here in City Hall and then right outside. Has anybody ever come to the festival? Do you know what it is? Okay, yay, so we have some knowledge here. So what we are is a wellness advocacy team dedicated to the promotion of healthy behaviors through partnerships and policies. It is our goal to make health resources and knowledge accessible to all. So the festival itself has two different aspects. One aspect is the vendors. So we get about 10 to 12 different vendors coming in from different pillars of health awareness. So holistic health, healthy practitioners, healthy world, healthy home, even added spiritual health. So some local churches are going to be involved this next festival. And then we also have, what we want to focus on is the Prevention Village. So that actually takes place in here. We con some NIU students into helping us to look at different key information and key vitals from all different participants, including cardiovascular health screens, balance screens, frailty screens. And this year, which is super exciting, we also have speech therapists coming in to do pediatric screens for like speech and audiology. So why is this important? Pretty obvious. If you're looking at any sort of statistics out there, there is an increased rise in chronic health conditions. And this is very important to us because we work with this within our community. So we're looking at increasing increases in diabetes, high blood pressure, heart disease, frailty, all those things that not only physically affect our community, but also cost in our community. So she's going to tell you some stats.
I like the research part of it. One thing that I wanted to mention as well is we are physical therapists, once again, within the community. I'm a professor at NIU, and I try and bring this awareness to the graduate students of the Physical Therapy Program, as well as audiology and SLP. And those are the students who, in turn, come out and volunteer to be able to interact with our community and really learn more about their current state of health and what are action steps that they can take from a preventative lens. And I think it's important today to talk about why prevention, right? And I have up here some information about just the prevalence of chronic pain. We know that at least 20% of adults report pain daily or most days out of the week. That is an incredible number, right? That's a lot of people experiencing pain. We also have a lot of predictive data on what the impact of chronic disease is going to look like in future years. So when we're looking five years out, 10 years out, what kind of rise are we looking at? And it is predicted that we're going to see upwards of a 99% increase by the year of 2050 of these conditions that Amber had mentioned. So that would be diabetes, that would be high blood pressure, high cholesterol, that could be frailty, which yields falls and things of that nature. But what that tells us is the rate of chronic disease and having more than one chronic disease, so multiple chronic diseases, are probably going to outpace the number of providers that can treat these chronic diseases. So this is something that we need to get ahead of the stream on and really talk to the public about. So what can we do about these things? Well, there are health behavior determinants that we can change, modifiable risk factors that we can talk to the community about, but also engage with them, bless you, on a personal level when they're coming in through the Prevention Village. Often times, if you go to a health fair, it can be a bit of a passive event. So you're walking past vendors, you're maybe grabbing something off a table, like a pen or a bag. But here, these individuals are getting to sit down and talk about what their sleep is like, what is their recovery like, what's their nutrition like, let's talk about their cognitive status, their speech, their hearing, their physical ability. And we'll look at a little bit of data here in a minute, but these are all modifiable factors for chronic disease. I think it's also important to mention the dimensions of wellness and that health is really just known as the absence of disease. What we're looking for is wellness. So we're looking for kind of that stewardship of a fulfilling life, not just the absence of disease, but what is the harmony and balance of all these different dimensions that you can see off to the screen? There's a few different ways that that can be achieved. Finding purpose is one way, contributing to your community, volunteering like you all are doing tonight, understanding how your social, natural, and built environments affect your health and well-being. Those are all important steps. And then what are initiatives above us doing about this? Well, the King County Health Department has put forth some plans. There's a Community Health Improvement Plan, a Transit Bike and Pedestrian Plan, and a Green Infrastructure Plan to promote this motto here of healthy people, healthy living, and healthy communities. There's also the Healthy People of 2030 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Sciences, which takes a look at the social determinants of health, which tie into those modifiable health risk factors, as well as health equity and health literacy. And I thought it would be important to just talk very briefly about what health equity is. I'm not sure all of us know what that term is, but that is when we see gaps in health outcomes by race, ethnicity, or really any other factor that limits the health outcome of a particular individual. And then health literacy is the ability to find, understand, and use information that is going to allow an individual to make the best decision for themselves. So as practitioners, we're going to have a particular idea of what we think the best decision for you is, but really, how well can you find information that's going to be meaningful for you and then make decisions that are going to be the best for what you're looking for out of your life? All right, I have the social determinants of health listed here that are covered by the Healthy People 2030. They're wide-ranging, they're larger than those dimensions of health that I mentioned. And you'll notice that there's a policy and law section on here as well, because really what we've learned through the research about prevention is it's not just about changing individual behaviors, it's also about changing the environment in which we operate. So for example, when we're talking about the bicyclists that are very motivated to go through a construction zone, right? They're on a particular path and they're looking to get their fitness in that way. What's a way that we can change the built environment to make that safer for them or to have an alternate route, or something that still promotes them being that active and that interested in biking, but in a healthier fashion? Okay, so when we're talking about the spectrum of prevention, our health fair is existing kind of within, if you're looking at this, level one, two, and three. We are partnering with other providers within the community that allow us to educate providers on the dimensions of wellness. We're promoting community education, which is level two. And then level one, we're strengthening individual knowledge because we're working with each person that walks in individually, which is kind of a really exciting thing to do, especially for my graduate students to see, because I'm hoping that that's what they do when they become providers as well. They have those one-on-one conversations. But it's also important to note that number six, they're influencing policy and legislation is really how we move the needle, and that's where you guys come in, right? So I think making sure that we're focusing on the spectrum of prevention here is important as well. Primary prevention is effectively getting ahead of the stream, tackling things before they become a problem. Secondary prevention is when you walk into my office because you sprained your knee, and now you'd like me to do something about it, and we can work on that. We want to operate more from a primary prevention standpoint, so not as many people need to walk into the office. Examples of that, certainly, and we've been here talking about this before, but walkable cities and towns, walkable neighborhoods. We know that these things reduce the incidence of chronic disease because individuals are out engaging with their community and being far more active with their community. I have a little bit of research here, and if we had more time, I would go line by line, but we don't. But I think it's important to know that there's a lot of research that supports bike lanes, safe school routes, mixed land use, a lot of green space that we can interact with, as well as just the placement of recreational parks and paths and those kinds of things. These are the kinds of screens that Amber was talking about. You can see my daughter in the corner, Annabelle. She was taking blood pressure in that moment. And then this is a QR code that you can use to sign up for a free health screen, and you can go to our website, which is listed there as www.wellbatavia.com. And you can also, if you have a kiddo that you'd like to have their speech assessed, you can register for that ahead of time as well. We do have some data that demonstrates the prevalence within our community that we've taken over the past few years, and you can see that it lines up pretty succinctly with the prevalence that we see in King County. I pulled the most recent numbers that are listed on the dashboard for the King County Health Department here, and you can see the prevalence of diabetes in the Medicare population as of 2022 is about 24%, and that's of diagnosed diabetes. Okay, we also have numbers here of people that were ever told they had high blood pressure, at 32%, ever told they had high cholesterol, 29%, okay? Which is, which lines up with some of the other metrics that we've taken here. See the blood pressure measurements here as well. And then the actual prevalence numbers, high blood pressure, 32%, high cholesterol, 31%. The reason why we focus on those is because we tend to collect them like trading cards. So once we have a condition that's in that metabolic sphere, like high blood pressure, high cholesterol, it increases our risk for heart disease and diabetes and these other things. So they don't often occur in a silo. So getting ahead of these things can be really important. All right, we also take a look at gait speed because we know that those of us who fall more often or have difficulty walking or pain walking generally don't make the choice to be out of the house to walk a ton. So getting an idea of how quickly we walk is also an indicator of mortality, as is balance. Ideally, we'd want everyone to be around that 30-second mark. You can see at the top, you can see where the majority of our clients were ranked last year, and they were kind of within that 20 to 10 to zero second, okay? We also tracked the number of minutes of moderate physical activity a week. It's recommended that we get at least 150, as well as vigorous activity. It's recommended at least 75, okay? So you can see those metrics. So that's the data that we take every year, and we're looking to take this year as well. I think our primary call to you all is that you become a larger megaphone for us and you help us promote it. Maybe you sign up if you're interested, but also feel free to leverage us as consultants for grants. We're definitely interested in chasing down some grants to tackle some of these issues within Batavia.
And we have handouts if anybody wants some.
Maybe you could leave them by the door when you leave so that anybody that's in the audience or from the council could pick one up? Because I think there are people that are very interested in what you're discussing here tonight. Alderman Vogelsinger?
Real quick, thank you for doing this. I listened to a podcast today with a doctor. He talked about how in America, we think of healthcare as sick care, and we really need to shift that model to more of a wellness holistic approach. And this definitely hits, like checks a lot of those boxes. So thank you for working so hard to bring this to our community.
Thank you. I think that's really why I like to define health versus wellness, because I think we're all looking for wellness, but health is typically what we get when we're thinking about healthcare, just checking off the absence of disease.
I'd like to thank you for putting yourself in the public place here and explaining what it is you can do and how you're doing it. And I think there's a lot of people that would, in Batavia, are really going to catch this message and be very interested in talking to you as time goes forward.
Thank you.
Our next item then is reapport, reappointment of Nancy Vance to the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a three-year term. I would make that appointment, and I'd ask for a motion of confirmation. Moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Thank you for that vote of confidence. Mrs. Vance has been a very star-studded supporter of the Fire and Police Commission and has really taken that thing to a very professional attitude about it and really has done a nice job. So I just want to thank you for reconfirming her appointment. It's good to have her on that, in that board. Okay, moving to 13, which is Main Street. And we got the executive director here, so Beth?
I'm trying to figure this out, so. All right, thanks so much for having me tonight. It was a busy month for us. At the beginning, in mid-April, on April 18th and 19th, we had Main Street America and Illinois Main Street come out for a Transformation Strategy Visit. Before that, we had sent out a survey that Main Street America created, and their goal is to get about 200. Our community had 482, so it was a really nice sampling of the community. And the words that you see on the screen are the things that people wrote in, the most prevalent words for what people love about downtown Batavia. And I just thought that would be nice to share with you guys because it's kind of how we feel about the community, so it's nice to see that the community feels the same. And then part of this, we just received our report from National, and we will be reviewing the recommendations that they made at our June meeting and go from there. And then we, Kristin and I presented at the Main Street America Conference in Birmingham on how to create a successful incubator space. We had about 200 people in attendance at our session. And the conference, our presentation focused on the marketing and promotion efforts that we do for the boardwalk shops, as well as the education and training, and most importantly, having a plan and ideas for how to stay relevant. It was a really nice experience, and people around the country are just so envious of the boardwalk shops, so it's such a nice experience.
You have to charge consulting fees, right?
Well, we could, the amount of emails we get about it. The boardwalk shops opened this last month on the 10th. This, it was a really successful weekend, the busy, the opening weekend. We had lots of people, but we're doing a promotion called Shop the Boardwalk Shop the Town. And basically, anybody who makes a purchase at the boardwalk shops gets entered into a raffle to win $50 in downtown dollars. Those dollars cannot be spent at the boardwalk shops, but they can be spent at participating businesses in the downtown district. The first weekend, we had 370, 47 entries, and that was from 68 different zip codes. And on the second weekend, we had 59 zip codes. And then for the total of the first two weekends, it was 95 unique zip codes that visited the boardwalk shops. So that's why we feel that this promotion is really important to push people out into the downtown district. And then we, another thing we've done just to get people moving around downtown, we partnered with the Batavia High School Rock the Runway program to take designs that students created. That program is a wearable art show where students can make designs out of anything but fabric. So you can visit these shops through the end of the month to see the student creations. They're really amazing, and if you haven't been to the show or seen these garments, it's really worth a visit. And then I, this, we just had our annual meeting last month, last week. We elected two new board members, Amy Larson from BEI, an a Batavia resident, is joining. She's been serving on the boardwalk committee for the last year. And then Nick Schneider, who is just a Batavia resident, not not just, but a Batavia resident. He's been on the farmers market and the cocktails in the park committee, so we're really happy to have them. And then Bob Hanson, after 10 years of service on the Main Street Board, has, is now stepping down. We will miss him so much. He's done so much to really drive our program forward and really spearheaded the boardwalk shops. So we'll miss him on the board, but he is going to stay on the, on the boardwalk shop committee. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I said I had a question for you that I talked to you on Monday. Remember, I can't remember what we talked about on Saturday.
Well, you sent me information about the bathroom.
I did send you information.
Yes.
That's, that's one of the things. But there was something else, I'll remember it.
I can't remember either, sorry.
Anything with the farmers market?
Oh, yeah, the farmers market opened last weekend. It was great, very busy. It was, there is 50 vendors for the farmers market and another 53 for artisan collective. So there is people all over downtown. We've just been really happy with the success of that. I did stop by the boardwalk briefly during the farmers market, and it was crowded, so it was really nice to see.
What about the Wednesday night work?
Oh, okay, thank you. And then we are also adding a Wednesday night farmers market, starting in June. That's just going to be a much smaller scale version of our Saturday market. We have about 20 vendors. It just will be on River Street between Wilson and State. So we're excited to have a new addition, and we will be promoting all the other businesses in the downtown district that will be staying open too.
What did I see? Was that, was that like 700 and something people and 95 zip codes, different zip codes?
Yeah.
Isn't, is that unprecedented? I mean, that's just a big number.
Well, this is the first year that we collected zip codes from all of the people that ever actually making purchases. And those are the ones that actually filled out the raffle card. So, yeah, it's a really impressive number. The draw is really good to the boardwalk shops. Yeah.
I had the opportunity this morning to be part of a meeting of 50 mayors over at Elmhurst College. And I walk in there, we're going to talk about this type of stuff, but there was, we were basically having a rally about how dismayed we are with the state government, is what it was. And three talked, and the rest of us just stood behind them and had our pictures taken. But when it was over with, and everybody kind of figured out who everybody was, I had no less than a half dozen mayors from the area. One asked me about the boardwalk shop and the River Street rebuilding. And at least one took my business card and said, he's calling me, and he's coming down on a Saturday and let me tour him around. So if he shows up, I'll let you know. But there's a lot of interest in Batavia. We're standing out pretty high and mighty in the region as somebody's doing something that's impressing a lot of people.
Yeah.
And if you talk to the vendors that are there, I spent a lot of time last year just observing things and talking to some of the vendors. And it's amazing how this is one of the places that they put at the top of their list of where they're going to go, where they're going to spend their money, where they're going to do things. And it was interesting to me to see on Saturday how many of the vegetable, fruit vendors and stuff from out of state came with things that they knew they could sell this year early on. Plants, a lot of things that were different from past years that they've kind of developed over time, that that's the thing that really works great off the beginning. So they put, the vendors put a lot of time and effort into this because they know it is that successful. They know that there's that many people that come off the bike path, that come downtown, that come from other cities to be here, to be part of that. So. Man, the meat guy used to run out of, the sticks I liked right away. Now he's got a nice supply. Yeah, I think they've all kind of developed that, you know, they know what they have to have in inventory, and they know that if they're really lucky, they get to sell out every day about 11:45.
Yes, I also wanted to commend you on a wonderful indoor market season as well. I spoke to one of the vendors as well, who said that she had winter Saturdays that were as good as some of her summer Saturdays. So, I mean, for that, for a winter market, and I remember when we were in Gaitano's on tiny, you know, three, three or four vendors on tiny little tables, to see it grow into that is really, really amazing.
I had a similar experience. I talked to one of the outdoor vendors, and he said his best day was at the indoor market. So, yeah.
I noticed the crossing guard over at River in Wilson. Is that a weekly thing?
Well, that is something that we asked ESDA to help us with on artisan collective days, just because it does bring so many more people. So ESDA will be there volunteering their services on the third Saturday of every month.
Unfortunately, it doesn't stop the people. Once they're gone, where they'll cross from the goat across.
Yeah.
Like every time I passed through downtown this weekend, somebody was passing there with their family, and I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to go on record, I know I've said it in the past, but, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer that, you know, not only Main Street, but the farmer, you know, the farmers market, a lot of the stuff you guys are doing is, boardwalk shops. I mean, it's, in my opinion, the heartbeat of this town and what's really kind of transforming it and making us more well-known outside of, of the tri-cities and our little town. So I think it's definitely something we should look at and, you know, investing in and just pouring everything we can into it because I think it's, I mean, it's amazing. I think it's, it's doing fantastic. I give you guys all the credit in the world, doing a great job, so keep it up.
Yeah, thank you. I did forget to mention one other thing, now that you mentioned regional draw. We did get a grant from Illinois Main Street for marketing, and we, our marketing promotion actually kicked off this last week. So you might hear some spots on Batavia, on the river, and digital audio extension. So that's just something new. We're really trying to expand the reach just beyond Batavia to bring people in from other towns, and it seems like it's working so far.
Any else?
All right, thank you.
You have anything else to present?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for coming down and keeping us in the loop here.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving then to item 14, which is approval, motion to waive formal bidding for Resolution 2024-074-R. Who's got this one?
I've got this. This is, coming down the heels of this, is a resolution for a contract with TransGuard for a substation wildlife fence to keep the critters out of our substations. But because there's only one vendor, we need to have a motion to waive formal bidding before we can address the resolution itself. So I would make a motion, we approve, motion to waive formal bidding for Resolution 2024-074-R.
Motion by Alderman Serone, second by Alderman Malley. Any discussion? Okay, this is the motion to waive formal bidding on Resolution 2024-074-R. Kirk call the roll.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to 15, which is Resolution 2024-074-R, approving a contract with TransGuard Solutions for substation wildlife fence installation. Who's got this one? Serone?
We just approved the waiving of formal bidding for, some animals are causing lockouts at our, two of our substations, so we're putting up this fencing system to try to keep them out. If it wasn't for the waiving of formal bidding, this probably would have been on consent agenda. But does anybody have any questions, comments? With that, I would make a motion, we approve Resolution 2024-74-R, approving contract with TransGuard Solutions for substation wildlife fence installation.
Second.
Move by Alderman Serone, second by Alderman Malley for the approval of Resolution 2024-074-R, approving contract with TransGuard Solutions for substation wildlife fence installation. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item 16, which is amendment to the official zoning map to modify a planned development overlay district granted by ordinance 19-15 and modified by ordinance 21-45. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Alderman?
This was discussed at the last COW. This is for, I believe, the last lot out at the Old Avenue Chevy property, right off McKee Street. And this is for the Earthmover Credit Union that's going in there. And this is just for the planned development overlay on it. There are another ordinance for the actual conditional use permit for the property. So this is the official zoning map amendment.
Motion?
Sure, I'll make that as a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-40.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah for the approval of ordinance 2024-040, official zoning map modification, a planned development overlay district granted by ordinance 19-15 and modified by ordinance 21-45. Any discussion? I would just note, I've reviewed this plan. This is quite a nice facility that they're going to build out there.
Yeah, I was going to mention that in the second one, but that, that is definitely one of the things I think is a benefit, is the extra layer of landscaping between the houses that are to the east of that. And just to finish out that neighborhood there and get everything, you know, built out and that, I think will be much improvement there around that.
Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
No.
Chanset?
Alderman Chanset, do you hear?
Right, aye.
Thank you. 11 yes, 3 no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving then to 17, which is ordinance 2024-041, granting a conditional use permit for a bank and other financial institutions for drive-through facilities.
Discuss, this is for the Earthmover Credit Union, and I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2024-41, granting a conditional use permit for a bank and other financial institution with a drive-through facility.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Solfah for the approval of ordinance 2024-041. Any discussion on that one? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy? Beck?
No.
Peeper?
No.
Chanset?
Aye.
11 yes, 3 no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Finally, ordinance 18, or item 18, ordinance 2024-045, authorizing exercise of an option to purchase real property and execution of a purchase and sale agreement for 910 through 916 First Street. Who's got this?
I've got that, Your Honor. This is kind of a real exciting one on the agenda tonight because this is something we've been talking about for quite a while, finding a place for the food pantry. And I think this building just almost seems like it was built for that, with the dock, the location, the accessibility, the parking that's there, the fact that it's right next to another property that the city already owns. I think it just lends itself to be a great place for that to move into. And for the other, you know, organizations that we may have room for to move in there, I think this will be a great upgrade for that. Everybody that doesn't know that's watching this, the food pantry building that was down by the wastewater treatment plant was demolished, they had to move out of it. They, you know, we needed the extra space for the waste treatment plant, and they're currently in a temporary home. But I think this is going to be a really good permanent home for that.
I agree with everything you want to say, but I would like to add that we will be able to pay for this with a $3 million grant from Congressman Underwood, when she was still with us in this district. I certainly am going to miss her with her generous supportive attitude that she had. But this certainly is something that a lot of Batavians who need the food and the clothing services are going to really, I think, appreciate that, to have that as part of the deal.
And I think that even though she's no longer our representative, I think she's still a voice that we can talk to and that will help us. So, you know, from that standpoint, yes, I think that's a great thing that she did while she was there. And I think we just have to keep realizing that we have to keep whatever contact we can get with those in Washington so that we can get grants like that and get money like that that we can bring back here to do things like this.
We're working on that right now.
I know. It's a, it's a constant job that we have to do. So with that said, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2024-45, authorizing exercise of an option to purchase real property and execution of a purchase and sale agreement for 910 to 916 First Street.
Second.
And this does need a three-quarter vote.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Lehman.
Mayor, may I just interject one more comment? I just wanted to publicly state that the owners of this building are leaving all of the existing racking in the warehouse, as well as all the pieces of office furniture that the food pantry identified would be useful for them in the future. And so that's such an incredible value and will allow us to utilize the balance of the grant funds for other needs that the food pantry has.
I certainly would like to encourage the members of the council to support this. We need a three-fifths vote, but this really is a spark of brightness for Batavia, not only today, but in the future. So I'd like to see us hold on to this one.
Alderman Chanset has his hand up.
Who did?
Alderman Chanset.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. As someone who's recently purchased a lot of infrastructure for a warehouse, I would tell you that that is such a generous gift with the pallet racking and whatnot, I would say thank you to the owners for doing so. I have no idea how helpful it is for the organization, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second for ordinance 2024-045 to be voted on. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
No.
Serrone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Thank you very much. That was a very nice vote to have at the end of the meeting. Okay, moving to 19, the administrators' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So first, I'd like to say that I just sent out a message to the business owners and property owners and residents along North River Street, just to let them know about, you know, what the road closures for special events are going to look like. Now that we've changed that road to be just one way, we're sort of in the driver's seat about when it can be closed. And that gives us the flexibility to not have it closed for periods of time when there aren't events there. Last year, the road was pretty much closed from Tuesday through Monday morning, and that was a frustration for folks who needed access to that area, whether it be for their customers or because they were residents trying to get to the alleys and things like that. So this year, we're going to put barricades out and those organizations that have received special event permits can just move the barricades in place during the time of the event. And then they'll put them back at the end of the event. As far as alcohol service goes, within the confines of the event, alcohol service is allowed and can move within the closed barriers of the street so long as the container is marked from which vendor that that was sold from. This, we hope, will curb some of what we saw last year of people bringing their own alcohol to events. That is strictly not allowed. And so if people are having events where they're saying, you know, bring your own chairs because there aren't enough out there on the street, or even a table to set drinks on, that's all okay, but it is not allowed to bring a cooler with outside beverages in there. The reason why we have these events and the road closures is to support our adjacent businesses, and so we want any beverages to be purchased from there. And does anybody have any questions about the North River Street closure before I move on?
I read through, I read through that today and I noticed that, you know, there are four other, I think they're like the sandwich A-frame signs.
Yes.
So that they make sure that they get those out facing the correct ways, that there's no outside alcohol and no alcohol beyond this point.
Right.
Which I think is a good step forward. I mean, that's something that we learned last year, so we're, you know, getting out ahead of that before this year. The one thing that I've forgotten, it was one of the things I want to talk about, there were comments that I noticed on Saturday down there that there was no place to sit, there was no tables. I don't know if we've thought about a plan for any of the tables that we have to go back out to sections on River Street or the markets Wednesday night, Saturday, or do we have not enough room there to leave those out all week?
That was the situation, that we don't have enough room to leave those set out all week, but it is a flexible thing. So if we find an area where it seems like something like that would be appropriate, you know, let us know. And Scott Haynes is always willing to meet people out there to discuss if additional things are needed.
And maybe that's something that we need to have a meeting with Main Street out there to figure out, is there a place we could put four tables out there, you know, just to add some more space for people to sit down with whatever they enjoy. I mean, to me, there was a lot more food vendors down there that had a lot better smelling things this year. I mean, I thought, you know, that, that's going to be an opportunity for that market to grow.
Yes. Mm-hmm, great. Any other comments? Well, from the good news to the bad news, we still do not have a permit from IDOT for the road diet. And we were assured last year that if we submitted our plans, that we would have the possibility of getting this under construction in April. And here we are, looking at the opening of the Hall Quarry Beach for the season, and we still don't have any anticipated date by which we will receive a permit. And so the mayor has drafted an additional letter to the Secretary of Transportation, urging his action in expediting getting this permit to us so that we can implement that. That being the case, and due to the ongoing construction in the area, the city will once again be funding, providing crossing guards at Union Street so that folks can safely cross to get to the beach this year, and will continue to do so until such time as we're able to implement the road diet, which we think will significantly improve the safety of crossing at all the intersections along Route 31. Next is, we had a fantastic event last week. Thank you to the mayor for being the host of the event. It was the unveiling of our historical marker program. We have the historical markers in 10 different areas. On Sunday at 2 o'clock PM, we walked around to see six of those. There are three at the corner of Wilson and Batavia Avenue, right at the rock wall that's right by the library there. And then we walked down to the United Methodist Church, and then we also came down here to the South Plaza and saw the two that are right outside this building. So encourage people to get out there, see those historical markers, and to check out the website where all of the historical markers are with additional information that we couldn't fit on the plaques. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Dunham Foundation for providing the $75,000 grants that allowed us to start this program and that will be continuing in the future. And also want to thank our partners in this project, the Depot Museum for the Park District, the Batavia Historical Society, and then also Batavia Public Library. The city has purchased an additional 500 more reusable bags to be distributed in our community. And communication shared to our website and social media, as well as a press release, that the Illinois Department of Public Health has issued a statement regarding the Mahoney Creek foam spill test, showing that there are no health risks associated with that. We, and then in the fire department, Chief Hanson, Deputy Chief Kessler, and Lieutenant Stevens traveled to the Sutfin Plant in Ohio to conduct the chassis inspection for our new engine number two. And our red shift crews attended an interesting training session called Dementia Live. It was at TRICOM, and Dementia Live is a high-impact dementia simulation experience that immerses participants into the life of folks with dementia, resulting in a deeper understanding of what it's like to live with cognitive impairment and sensory change. In the police department, we're proud to report that Sergeant Chris Potoff graduated from the Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command. It's a rigorous 10-week training course for police supervisors. On May 13th, the police department conducted a senior fraud presentation for the residents at the landings that was extremely well-attended. And we had a great, successful cop on a rooftop day on Friday, May 17th, at Dunkin' Donuts, both locations in Batavia. This event is one of the largest fundraising events for Special Olympics Illinois, and we were able to raise over $5,000 that day. We've got a new speed display sign, which has been installed on Western Avenue to help make motorists more aware of their speed. Public Works had a wonderful event that was hosting the third-grade Public Works tours for all the schools in town, and Gary was happy to report that only one kid puked this year. And the pre-construction meeting for Carriage Crest was held on May 15th, and the contractor expressed a desire to start off right away, so we're going to be commencing in early June. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
I'd like to make one, one more comment.
Sure.
From your earlier stuff, talking about the IDOT secretary not responding or not expediting our, our permit for the road diet. If anybody wants to contact Omar Osman, the Secretary of State, including any of us here or anybody watching this, the phone number for the office is 217-782-7820. So maybe if 14 of us call him every day until they get the permit done, maybe we could get it back here sooner.
Can you repeat that number slightly slower?
I sure can. I'll repeat it as many times as it takes.
I can just provide a little update from this meeting I was at this morning with 50 other mayors in the area. We have a very common concern. There's a lot of other cities that are sharing the same, same dilemma, that things aren't going quick and nobody's answering their phone and all kinds of stuff.
Well, if we're squeaky enough, maybe we'll get the wheel to move.
Let's hope, but I'm just saying that there's plenty more cities and villages out there that have similar problems going, so, and it's a variety of situations, so.
Thank you.
We have other business from the council? As you know, we're going to adjourn this and go to a committee meeting when we get done here. Alderman Vocal Singer?
I have another, I don't know if I should mention it now or at the next meeting. It was just like a school day for all schools in Batavia. And I wanted to ask again about the possibility of getting a sidewalk on Deer Path north of Main Street, because it is very dangerous there, where the children, when they are on their bikes, really one day a year if they live north of Main Street, have to traverse on the road, a blind curve, oncoming traffic, cars going very quickly. I know there is a lot of reasons why that has not come to fruition yet, but I know also that that medical resorts is going in, and I think there's just a portion that we would have to complete because they're adding a sidewalk on part of it. So I'd like to request again that we make sure kids that live north of Main Street can bike safely to Grace McLean.
I think Scott has something to add to that.
Yeah, the Ignite Project, that is the senior, you know, care center that's, that's being built, they're working on demolishing the building right now, they will be building a segment at least along the east side of, of Deer Path up to their north property. There will be a gap then beyond that, but that, they will build that section.
Can we fill the gap in?
I'm not very good with concrete myself. I don't, I don't, I don't. We would probably have to talk about the sidewalk program and how that would get into that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I've offered to take you and your counterpart from the seventh ward on a tour and go to lunch one of these days soon, and I'd like to do that because I can give you some insights about some things that ever, have occurred or are occurring out there on that intersection that you need to know about. So we'll do that soon, okay? All right, anybody else have anything from the council? I just want to say that I obviously got to participate in this dedication of the new signs that the Dunham Foundation provided, $75,000 grant to the community of Batavia to put the first group up. And we are, I think we've already got another 10 that we think we can put up, so we're not done with this, and they're very unique pieces. I invite you to go out and walk them. There's backstories though to each one of them, and hopefully on the computer, if nothing else, in the days ahead, we can get some of the backstory accomplished and shown about what further happened in some of these areas. One of them, I guess, is on the sign out here, talks about how this room that we're in was the room that the US space industry came in and met with Dunbar Capital DK Aerospace, and in this room, they made the fuel line that was used in the rocket that landed on the moon. And then as an aside on our sign out here, they note that one of the astronauts that was in the rocket, his mother went to school in Batavia, Illinois, and his father, his grandfather was minister of the Methodist Church. So we've got all this kind of localized history beyond all the good stuff. So I think it's going to be a fascinating tour that a lot of people are going to really find very interesting. And we got a lot more to talk about that we haven't even put out yet on the street, so I'm thinking that Batavia's got a lot to be proud of, and, you know, starting with our city council and the, the interest and the support and dedication that each of you bring to this group, we're able to do some very innovative things and we don't let a lot of things slide, and we've got a few things out there now that as a community, we need to make some decisions about. And so we're going to be looking heavily at some of these questions going forward because the world is changing and there's a lot of people doing things a little bit different, and maybe they should, or maybe they're too fast or too slow or whatever. There's a lot of moving parts here at the, in the world right now, and we got to take a very strong look at what's going on, so. And we've got a great staff here to kind of oversee what's going on here, so. With that, I would say I asked for a motion to adjourn, and... Moved. Motion and second, take a voice vote.